Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting scheduled for Monday, June 24th, 2024, at 5:30 PM will be held in person and virtually. Virtual participation link to view the minute. Excuse me. We are gonna meet in person and virtually. Hannah, would you do roll call?
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Absent. Excuse.
Councilmember Amir.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Mina.
Here. Okay, next we're going to do, is there any agenda modification?
No Chair, there is not.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna do announcements, reports, and presentation. There's no announcements, so we're gonna do, our first presentation is on briefing See Click Fix with Director Gao.
So, good evening, for the record, Public Works Director, Ingrid Gao.
Eric Cottle, Maintenance and Operations Services General Manager.
So, we wanted to come to you tonight and talk to you a little bit about the See Click Fix app, and more specifically about how that app that residents can put in requests and concerns in, actually talks to our OMS, our Cartograph system that is our asset management and our task order system, so that you have a better understanding of what happens to that request when a citizen or resident puts in that request. What do we do with it, and how do we deal with that? How do we communicate back with those residents?
Why is it important? Well, it's a quick and easy way for residents to report any issue, anytime. The emergency ones, after hours, we prefer not to get put in, but those are 911 calls. But most of the issues, we prefer getting this method. It geo-tracks to pinpoint the location of the request, so it's important, wherever you're at, putting a request in, you're at that location unless you're entering an address when you get home. It directly integrate, integration to OMS Task Management software, so staff is alerted right away. So, it comes in and See Click Fix, but it integrate, I can't say that word again.
Integration.
It integrates with, there we go, integrates with OMS or Cartograph. We get all the reports in Cartograph. Easy for managers and supervisors to track tasks and resources, and to get reimbursed for such things as disasters. It's really easy for us to get reimbursement if we tap, if we have a task and we track the actual labor time and materials associated with the event. Makes it very easy. And it's automation to alert residents when issue has been resolved. When you put a See Click Fix request in, once it's closed, you get a notification that it's been closed. This is the process of how it looks on the app. The homepage is on the left. You go to the next page and you can either put a picture in if you want, you don't have to, you can select no photo, or you can select from your photo library if it's something you've taken, a picture of, and you want to put it in. There's a few topics that you can select from to include dead animal dumping, trash or brief fence, graffiti guard rail nuisance, or vehicle illegal dumping and other. The other one is one we don't prefer a lot of times, but... And then last, gives you a chance to put in a description or your comments. A thank you is nice, once it's closed, but you don't have to do that. And here's some of the requests we receive, not, this is some of the requests, they're limited, but for example, light pole down, sinkhole graffiti, illegal dumping, tree down, sign down, storm drain, and broken water main. What happens after the request is submitted? So, based on the nature of the request, appropriate department is alerted. If it's selected other, our admin staff select in the morning where that department goes to. Details are invested and investigated in a request, ownership is changed if necessary. A lot of times, a request will come in as a pothole, and come to find out it's a water leak, so we have to switch departments. Then tasks are created for crews to address and resolve the request. So, once the request is verified that it's the department and we can do the work, a task is created, so we track labor, time, materials, and like I said, if it's a FEMA and reverse reimbursement, we click the box and that automatically triggers FEMA rates. So, then it emails us, will alert the resident, letting them know that we've actions taken. So, basically, we've seen the request and we're gonna facilitate the work. And then the crews complete the tasks associated with requests, and then it's closed. It kind of went backwards, but I wanted to touch on that, that part about the task, so... Yeah. So, two emails go out. The original one is when the request comes in, then the work's been assigned, and then another email goes out once the work is completed. These are the requests that are, so not all our requests come in via See Click Fix. We do take phone calls and staff put requests in, in Cartograph directly. You'll see that requests entered by the city staff were 200, and then See Click Fix were 663, for a total of 863, and that's just in the past two months. Gives you a sample set of the amount of requests that the city receives every day.
Just to clarify, those aren't necessarily requests in just a public works, those are requests for any of the type of complaints that can be done through See Click Fix, that could be for any department.
Inside the requests, so what we see, when a supervisor or a staff member or manager looks in Cartograph, what do they see? So, you get location with a map, really in-depth detail of what the issue is, and that, again, can be transcribed over from See Click Fix. And the department assignment, who it's assigned to, what department it is, and normally, as a request comes in, it's directly associated to the supervisor, the field supervisor for that division. And then the public comments that come in via See Click Fix, those are helpful to us, believe it or not. Sometimes they're negative, but we might have had a bad location, and we could put in that comment, not a, we couldn't find the issue, could you please email us or call us to get a better description of the issue? And then they get a kickback through See Click Fix, it says that notification, and then they can get ahold of us.
I need to ask you a question. Would you like questions asked as you're going through the slides, or would you rather wait until the end of your presentation?
Anytime I'm comfortable with.
Okay. Then I have a question. Going back to the slide you just did. With the request entry by the city. What's the timeframe from the time that you get that request, that you go to those areas and get it fixed?
A lot of the requests are time-sensitive, so sometimes we respond to requests faster if there's an emergency or a trip and fall, or, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. So, if there's an issue with it to life or safety, then we would address that immediately. We try to get a response back within 24 hours, working days. We only get notified during working hours.
Okay, thank you.
We have internal comment section also in the request, that we, those are only visible to internal employees that are involved with the request. Sometimes we go back and forth between, let's say, engineering and MNO about an issue. It may involve a tree, it may involve code enforcement, and it may involve engineering. This is a good way for us to communicate internally, the public doesn't see these comments, but internally about what the issue is, or we're passing it back and forth. So, if we get the issue complete, we can say, our part of this is done, now involves in your court essentially. It gives us the requestor information. There has to be an email associated with, to put a request in. We prefer, they could still come in anonymous, but we prefer to have some kind of contact information. And then the tasks that are associated with it, gives us what tasks, if a task was created for the request, we can, it's a quick way for us to locate that, and pictures and attached files, which comes in handy when you want to document it further down the road. So, inside the tasks, very similar to the request, has the asset information and location, and that's where we're getting in-depth here. Cartograph also has most of our assets in it, and that includes vehicles, pipe segments, sidewalk segments now. So, it makes it easy when we have a task, we can associate that to an asset, and it helps us track the maintenance of that asset over time. It also transcribes the details from the request over. It has the labor assignment, so all the people that are involved with that, labor time, equipment, and materials. And then, of course, that last one is the same thing, so it's kind of redundant. And these are two request task detailed reports. When we're asked for information, this is how they're presented to whoever's asking. Gives us all the information in one to two-page documents. We have the ability to attach a map to this as well, but it takes up a lot of space. Don't take questions if...
Councilwoman Rick.
Thanks. I just have a question, if it's only during work hours, so the ones that come in at the nights and weekends, does that automatically then Monday morning get sent?
Yes.
To the right departments?
Yes, I think it looked at once we're actually back at work. If they are an emergency situation, so something that you should be calling 911 for, we do prefer that people call 911 because we will not see it until the next day or the following working day.
So, what's the timeframe, what's the end of the day then?
So, depending upon what the type of request is and who it automatically goes to, for anything that goes through MNO, that is between 6:00 AM and 3:30 PM. For all of our other offices is between 8:00 and 5:00.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilwoman Baldwin?
Thank you. Who does your maintenance on See Click Fix itself?
Are you talking about the software? The software itself, so obviously See Click Fix has support for the system, but we also have some internal staff that have capabilities and the ability to go in and make adjustments to the OMS software. See Click Fix itself, we don't necessarily make too many adjustments to other than the categories.
Some of the automation, we have the ability to change what's seen, those types of things.
Okay, is there any other person that wants to ask a question? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it was mainly a follow-up to that, in that space of categories and then the routing, I'm assuming by categories, you've got maybe certain things going to certain teams. When people first land on that page and they're given that set of categories, is that developed through what's just most commonly sought as far as services?
Yes, I would say that, and to get it really nailed down, we found that when you have so many selections, it gets really convoluted.
I hear that.
Okay.
And just to add on to that, so depending upon what the request is, it might go to a specific department automatically, that's some of the automation that Eric was talking about, if there are other ones that we'll go through and look at and then decide where it needs to go, depending upon what the actual description of that issue is, if we can determine what it should go to.
Okay, so some triage.
Okay.
One last question.
Thank you.
In that space of, you know, in, I think the example, it referenced a pothole, right? How much of the content that you're receiving, submitted through See Click Fix, is making its way like into the local street preservation program and some of that? Is there any correlation happening there for things that are maybe bigger than what can be done in like a quick repair?
So, I would say it's not necessarily related to the See Click Fix request so much as it's related to what our maintenance operations staff go out and deal with on a regular basis. So, whether it's come in through See Click Fix, or whether we've seen that pothole, maintenance operations goes out and repairs the roadway. If they have a particular roadway they're spending a significant amount of time on, that is something that we will try to address with our preservation programs where we need to go out to do a contract, but there's a, there's a certain amount of patching that our maintenance crews can do just fine. It's when it starts getting in excess of that, or they're out there regularly doing it. Typically, if they're out there regularly doing it, it's actually a rebuild for that street, and so that's gonna trigger a longer process for us to get to the point where you can actually go out and rebuild the street.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have our first quarterly, quarter 2024 financial report by Director Thomas.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Council. All right. So, I'm here to update all of you on our financial position as at the end of the first quarter of 2024, so all of our financial activity through March 31st. And here's an overview of our general fund revenues and expenditures, where we're at year-to-date so far compared to our budget, year-to-date budget, as well as where we were at year-to-date in 2023. Overall, we've collected $26.4 million in revenue through March 31st, and that's compared to $20.3 million last year at the same time, and our budgeted revenue expectations of 20.9 million dollars, just 20.9 million dollars. So, we're both performing over 2023 as well as budget. I do want to caveat that, though, a large portion of that is transfers in, and those transfers in account for ARPA money that we have living in a different fund, and so for all of those ARPA projects that we have budgeted in 2024, we've transferred that money from our cumulative reserve fund back into the general fund for spending. So, if you were to take those transfers in, they're considered revenues or resources, but really it's money that we've been setting aside. If we were to take those, the increase over last year is closer to 9%, not the 30% increase. And those increases, I'm gonna talk about all of the significant taxing categories, but one category that I'm not gonna talk about later is the other category, which is actually pretty significant. It is currently performing, outperforming budget by $1.3 million. And in that category are a couple of different things. One is our photo enforcement program for the school zones, and currently, we have collected about $683,000 more than we had originally budgeted year-to-date, and also collected about $350,000 more in interest earnings than we had budgeted for year-to-date. And then we also have some interest penalties related to BNO tax as well in there. So, that is a pretty significant piece I'm not going to talk about later, but calling out why that is, that our overall revenue is outperforming, one of the reasons why we're outperforming 2023. And then expenditure, on the expenditure side, we've spent $22.6 million in the general fund to date, and that compares to $21.3 million year-to-date in 2023, and our budget expenditures of $23.4 million. So, we've underspent our budget year-to-date so far by just shy of $800,000. So, we haven't, we're doing okay on spending so far. So, starting off with tax revenue, these numbers have all changed a little bit, a lot of these numbers I keep consistent throughout the whole year, but now that we're into a new year, I've updated the percentage of these major revenue sources as our overall general fund. They have shifted just a little bit, each of the major categories, and that's really due to BNO tax, because BNO tax has become such as, a much larger piece of our general fund budget. So, in 2024, taxes account for $70.9 million, or 67% of the general fund budget. Property taxes make up 34% of the general fund budget, with $24.4 million budgeted. We're right on track with what we've collected. We don't anticipate to collect any more or any less within really $100,000, but by the end of the year. And that fluctuation, and that would just be related to delinquent taxes, either the collection of past due delinquent taxes, or under-collecting, not collecting taxes that are due this year. Our retail sales and use tax makes up 29% of our general fund budget, and we have $20.6 million so far budgeted in 2024. I think the most important number is the very first one, which is $53,000 we have collected over last year, year-to-date, so we're right at 1% more than the prior year. That $53,000 is a very small number in the whole scheme of things, considering our, they make, the retail sales tax makes up 29% of our overall budget. It's only increased about 1% so far this year. If we stay on track, which I project, if we, if we don't have any major recession, if we continue to stay on the same track the rest of the year, we should complete the year a couple million dollars above what we have budgeted in retail sales tax, but we still have quite a ways to go, so hopefully things stay status quo, and if they do, we should finish the year in a favorable position. Our budget is obviously, we've exceeded our budget, because again, we had budgeted pretty conservatively, assuming at least a minor recession in 2024. So, looking at the retail sales tax in a little bit more detail, these are the major reporting categories. Things have changed this year in each of these reporting categories compared to last year. As far as first quarter goes, our construction, our construction sales tax is down, but that's something that we saw in first quarter last year as well. We saw year-to-date decreases in quarter one. We saw a recovery of those decreases in the subsequent second, third, and fourth quarters, so hopeful that we will see the same in 2024 as well. Transportation and warehousing, this seems to be playing with our emotions. It was really high in 2022, it took a dip last year, and it's increasing again this year, and it's all the same subcategory, and those are our courier services, so our DoorDash's, our Uber Eats, our, all of our deliveries. So, for all the decreases that we saw last year, they've picked up again so far this year. Maybe it's the winter months, people don't want to go out and they want everything delivered to them. And then also, the automate motive sector, this is the first quarter that we've actually seen a decrease since early 2020. So, we had seen all that pent-up demand post-COVID, and we've been flying pretty high on that, and then this is the first quarter, quarter-to-quarter comparison where we've actually seen a decrease, and I suspect that this has a lot to do with interest rates remaining pretty high and just the relative cost of purchasing a new vehicle. So, hopefully, if the Fed decides to reduce rates at some point this year, which we keep saying it's gonna happen next, and the next time they meet, and the next time they meet hasn't happened yet, maybe by the end of the year if we do see a reduction, I'm wondering if we might see kind of a pent-up demand in auto sales at that point with people that have been really holding off on trading in or buying new vehicles because of the high interest rates. Our next major category is our utility tax, that makes up 20% of our general fund taxes at $14.1 million budgeted in 2024. We have two major, or two primary sources of utility tax, and that is our own internal utility taxes, which is water, sewer, storm, and solid waste. Those are all the utilities that the city provides, and our tax rate is 9% that goes into the general fund, 2.5% goes into our streets capital fund. And then, we also have our external taxes, where we charge external utility providers, electric, natural gas, cable, and telephone utility tax, at 5% goes into the general fund, and 1% goes into our streets construction fund. What's new and what's contributing to the large over-budget from, and as well as our over-prior year-to-date, is the fact that we now collect water sewer and storm utility tax revenue from external providers. So, those are our water districts and cities that provide utility services to customers in the side of the city of Auburn, that we don't provide those services to. So, last year was the first year we started collecting those taxes, so we didn't have a really good baseline, we underestimated what that amount would be in 20, what we'd be collecting in 2024, and now we're seeing about $300,000 of these overages are related to those external water, those external taxes for water sewer and storm services. So, then business and occupation tax now makes up 10% after we did our mid-biennial budget amendment last year to get our BNO tax projections more in alignment with what we think was going to happen. So, we budgeted $7 million for 2024. Year-to-date, we've collected $3.1 million. Two, a little over $2 million is the grocery, the filers paying gross receipts, a little over a million dollars is filers paying square footage tax. The total paid, the total tax filers have been paying their quarter four 2023 tax returns, so we collected those at the end of January. And then, there's a few of our 2023 annual filers had submitted their annual, even though those annual returns aren't really due until, weren't due until April 30th, a lot of those annual filers had their tax returns filed before or by March 31st. So, that $3.1 million that you see is a combination of those two filers. And this is higher than 2023, mostly because we shifted a lot of quarterly, a lot of annual filers to quarterly filers. So, last year, we were seeing only quarterly filers, and we had about 70 quarterly filers at the end of last year, or at the beginning of last year. This year, we've bumped that up to about 350 quarterly filers. As they were filing, and the reason we did that is we had filers filing their annual returns, we were looking and seeing how much revenue that they were actually bringing in, and we switched them to quarterly filing instead of annual filing. Other taxes make up 7% of our total general fund budget, with $4.7 million budgeted, that is our criminal justice sales tax, admissions tax, gambling tax, leasehold excise tax, and franchise fees. We are over our year-to-date projections, as well as year, last year, year-to-date collections, and really the most significant piece of this is actually admissions tax. So, part of our BNO tax audits that we've been doing, some of our compliance audits that we've been doing, we have been filing, finding some larger filers that are actually subject to admissions tax that haven't been paying, and so we received a couple of large past due tax payments in the first quarter of 2024. So, that is why you're seeing that variance this year. It's not all related to 2024 taxes, it's some back taxes as well. Licenses and permits make up 2% of the total general fund budget, with $2.6 million budgeted. Half of this is building permit revenue, $1.2 million is all other permit revenue, and about $450,000 is business license revenue. Everything is kind of pretty close on budget, I mean, it's in the red, but by $19,000 and $21,000, that's a pretty small number, considering we're just looking at the first quarter. We're tracking, close enough to budget that I would say that we'll probably come close to ending the year on budget, or at least very close to it. And our governmental revenue, this is our federal, state, and local grants, our MIT compact that we have with the casino, and state shared revenue, so the state's portion of sales tax that they share with us, which includes our streamlined sales tax, our motor vehicle excise, motor tax, marijuana and liquor, marijuana and liquor excise taxes, and then the criminal justice sales tax. We are over budget and over our year-to-date in the previous year, and this is really only, is really mainly attributed to our compact payments from the casino. We were, we ended the year, if you may recall, we ended the year under budget, and that was just due to the timing of those payments, so we didn't collect all of our 2023 payments before the end of the year, and we received those at the beginning of, in the first quarter of this year, and so that's why we appear to be over budget. Charges for services, we have four major categories, general government... General government, public safety, development services, and culture and recreation. They're all very close to budget. General government is thirty thousand below and I think that this is the same reason I have every single time. And it's just the timing of those payments and the reimbursement basis in which we get those payments reimbursed from other cities. Public safety, this is our, our private security for police, for police officers, that they do private security for private businesses, as well as our school resource officers and the officer dedicated to the casino. We pay the officers and then we get reimbursement from those businesses and those organizations to recoup our costs. It's just a timing in the, the extra money that we've received. It's not necessarily that we have extra officers doing extra work, it's really more, mostly just a timing of when we collected that money. Development services is a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars above budget and this is related to really the development service sides, development service sides of things, our plan check fees, our facility extension charges and our zoning and subdivision fees. So it's a good thing this is actually showing kind of a strength and just kind of development in the city and the, and the types of projects we have going on. So that's a strong indicator. And then our culture and recreation is seventy four thousand dollars above budget. Again, I think this is the same explanation as we've seen, it's really our green fees and our pro shop sales and our recreations, our recreation programs at the community center. Our green fees continue to be above budget, they're contributing mostly to that seventy four thousand dollars. But they are below last year's year-to-date. So maybe it's the rainy weather, maybe it's the colder weather, so fingers crossed that we get a nice spring and summer to exceed our two thousand and twenty three green fee revenue. And then on the expenditure side of things, by each department, you can see how we're either underspending or maybe even slightly overspending by department so far year-to-date. It's not uncommon in the first quarter to see some overages by departments just because it's in the first quarter of the year that we're paying, making any annual payments. So like whether it is membership fees, insurance payments, or any one-time, those one-time large payments that we would be making for the year usually are due at the beginning of the year. And so sometimes that skews what, what our, what we've actually spent as a percentage of our overall budget. But everything, we don't see any major underspending, we don't see any overspend, unusual or unexpected overspending. Right now, we're right about five hundred thousand dollars under budget and that's what we would expect to see. A quick update on ARPA and where we're at so far since the last time we've met. We had, just a refresher, we have a fourteen point seven million dollar ARPA award that we received back in two thousand and twenty one. We have spent to date through the lifetime of the ARPA project, four point, a little under four point six million dollars. And just in this last quarter, we spent a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. We have a couple of pretty large projects in that very last category that says other projects not started that are slated to begin construction this year and should be complete. If not by the end of this year, be close to completion by the end of this year. So we will continue to see more spend down in those ARPA categories throughout two thousand and twenty four. Other non-general fund highlights, just looking at our REIT. I like looking at REIT because it's kind of another extension of what's going on in the economy with house, with home sales. Or not just home sales, but just all real estate sales in the city. We've collected one point one million dollars so far. Our total budget for the year is two point two million, so we've collected half of what we budgeted so far through the first quarter. And we have exceeded two thousand and twenty three. So it's, it is interesting, last year was cooler than obviously in two thousand and twenty two, but we have already started all three months and two thousand and twenty four have exceeded our actuals from two thousand and twenty three. So just an indication that a combination between the volume of house sales and the value of, of prices seem to be trending upwards and hopefully that continues. And again, if the Fed decides to reduce rates at any point, maybe that'll even bump up even more by mid to end here. And that is my.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Reich.
I have a question, Jamie. Thank you for the good presentation. On the ARPA funds, on the projects, is there a timeframe where that ARPA fund has to be spent by?
No, well, no, there was, as far as reporting to the federal government. We claimed all of, as far as our federal government reporting, we claimed it all as revenue loss. So we could pull that revenue into the general fund to be spent the way council had directed us to spend it. So as far as our reporting requirements to the federal government, we have met all of those federal requirements. As far as meeting what the council has asked us to do with all of those projects, however long it takes us to spend, that doesn't mean that there isn't an opportunity for us to come back to council and maybe reprioritize if there's some projects that came in under budget or maybe we shifted our priority needs, then we would come to council and ask for, ask for how we should reallocate that, that ARPA funding.
Thank you.
So how much, how much money did you say we have left?
Let's go back, we've had a fourteen point seven million dollars and we spent four point, a little under four point six, we have ten point two million dollars left. Yeah, it's all, it's all spoken for throughout all these various programs, but yes.
That's great. Any other, Councilwoman Baldwin?
Yeah, I was curious if you happen to have an update on our spend for our attorney services right now?
Right now, I don't. In fact, we have a couple of outstanding invoices because they keep getting stuck in spam filters. So I don't, I don't have an actual update. I can, once we get all of those invoices in, we can get a more, like a more accurate what we've spent so far.
Any other further questions? No? Okay, thank you. Great report. I'm going to turn it over to the community wellness. I'm going to let my second vice chair to. Second, my chair.
So at this time, we're going, excuse me, have a presentation on Resolution five, seven, seven, three from Prum. This is a resolution approving the South King County Homeless Partners two thousand and twenty five work plan and operating budget.
And it's.
And it looks like it's Director Tate.
Thank you and good evening. Vice Chair, Chair, Councilmember's Mayor. First of all, I'd like to introduce to, to my right, Dorsel Plants, who is Skip Program Coordinator. And we're going to talk, I'll probably deliver the presentation, but if there's Q and A that might come up, Dorsel might help with fielding some of those questions. So just a reminder, Skip, South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And I or we come before City Council a couple of times a year to talk about Skip and the work that Skip does. And I do have a presentation here. But before jumping into the presentation, just wanted to mention that Skip is a organization. It's an agency that the city of Auburn serves as administering agency for. So we'll walk through this presentation, but this presentation is also being provided to all of the other member jurisdictions. But this one's a little unique, I think, just because we, not only are we a member of Skip, but the city of Auburn serves as, as the administering agency. Which means Dorsel and Claire as well, who's been before council, receive their benefits from, and paycheck from the city of Auburn. And with the help of the membership fees that we'll talk about in just a second. Also receive support in terms of internal services like IT and a little bit of legal help here and there and facilities and things of that nature. So a little bit about Skip. Some of this might be a refresher for some, might be a little new for others. But this goes back to two thousand and nineteen when Skip was created through an interlocal agreement. And that was done through a bunch of interactions like this where individual cities talked about entering into an agreement with other cities to work on housing and homelessness issues in South King County. So right now, you can see on the screen, there's twelve member jurisdictions that are part of Skip. And all those cities have signed interlocal agreements, saying that we'll all work together to explore solutions and identify issues and priorities for South King County in the area of primarily housing is the, kind of the primary topic. And housing as it serves as a solution to homelessness, one type of solution. That's because housing and homelessness don't contain themselves within single-city boundaries. So this is an area of work and a partnership that we take a lot of pride in because it's been really effective. It's been really effective in terms of getting a bunch of governmental entities, a bunch of cities together to talk about how to solve a problem together. And I don't think you hear about that enough in the work of government where that happens and it happens successfully. The mayor serves as the Chair of the Executive Board for Skip. So many of the Skip kind of guiding operations and principles come from the direction of the Executive Board. So each one of these member jurisdictions has a seat at the table. In some cases, that's a mayor, in some cases, it's a council member. And they convene once a month to kind of work through issues. And then Claire and Dorsel do the, all the footwork to carry out those objectives and those missions. And could talk a lot about all the kind of tentacles that that reaches. But tonight, really, the resolution that's before Auburn City Council that's being presented is a, an interlocal to, or a resolution to endorse and approve the two thousand and twenty five Skip work plan and budget. So within your packet, not only do you have this presentation, but you have a draft resolution. Additionally, attached to the draft resolution is the resolution that the Skip Executive Board approved, voted on and approved, which is the, kind of the summary package of what the two thousand and twenty five work plan and two thousand and twenty five operating budget would look like. So this presentation and this type of resolution is being brought forward to all twelve member cities and King County. So here, you see in this flowchart where we're at in this process. We'll go through each of these boxes, but we are at the end of the process. So a lot of work's been done up to this point to create a work plan and to create an operating budget for next year. You'll see in your packet, the, the work plan itself is divided into four main goals, priority areas, which help define and give direction to Skip and areas to work. So there's four goals and then there's several action items underneath each of those goal areas. Additionally, in fact, here they are. So fund the expansion and preservation of affordable housing, develop policies to expand and preserve affordable housing, serve as an advocate for South King County, and manage operations and administration. So in your packet, you can see how that expands out into different, more actionable items. Here's a few bullet points to talk about operating budget and revenue and expenses. Basically, the operating budget, four hundred and sixty seven, four hundred and sixty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty seven dollars for two thousand and twenty five. You can see that more than two-thirds of that goes towards the salary and benefits for Claire and Dorsel. And then there's additional funds that are needed for miscellaneous services, sometimes some legal assistance that's needed and other supporting areas. You'll see here that the way that membership fees are established for each of those partner agencies is based upon population categories. So you'll see there that there's, what, five categories that are established. The city of Auburn lives within that category of sixty five thousand to a hundred, a hundred thousand population. As we sit at about ninety thousand, close to ninety thousand total population, about eighty thousand of that being in King County. So you'll see that the contribution that we paid in two thousand and twenty three and what it was in two thousand and twenty four, and you can see that bumping up in two thousand and twenty five. You can see where it projects out in two thousand and twenty six as well. A little bit more detail on fees, membership fees, as well as what those population figures are by city, so that you can kind of see that in a little more detail for what each member pays and why they pay what they pay. So you'll see some repeating numbers in there that show, well, you'll see, actually, this, this is more on the population side. You'll see over here more on the contribution side where you can see some repeating numbers. For example, Federal Way in Kent, you see they have the same numbers because they fall in the same population category. And you can see there how it summarizes out total revenues and total expenses. So, you know, the materials are in your packet. I don't mean to make this sound easy because the work that Skip does is robust, it's, it's deep, it's complex. But in terms of bringing a resolution forward to the Auburn City Council, it's an annual business matter for us to bring forward. We've done it the year before, we did it the year before that and we'll do it next year because it's a requirement to be in a local agreement for each city council to be able to see the details of the work plan, to be able to see the details of the next year's budget and for each city council to put a stamp of approval on moving forward and supporting that. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Baldwin?
Thank you. This is a question, Dorsel, that you might be able to better answer. In those four goal areas that we have, one of the things I've been reading into lately for creating affordable housing in those spaces sort of in perpetuity is a concept of land trusts. Is that something that falls in any of those categories today, either facilitating the development of those or, you know? Does that fit in your work, Kell?
It's a wonderful question, excuse me, and it certainly does. It falls in, say, into a couple of different areas. We've looked a lot recently in preservation and so we've talked a little bit about community land trust as far as preserving and in particular, when it comes to mobile or manufactured home parks, that's one particular way that might, or one strategy that might be useful there. Additionally, in our goal three, serving as an advocate for South King County, that is definitely something that is a, is a successful strategy that we're seeing. We have Homestead Community Land Trust serving on the Skip Advisory Board and they've come to the Executive Board a couple of times to present on community land trusts. And I actually just became aware of another one that is specializing and partnering with school districts that I'm working to schedule a meeting with to potentially bring that information to South King County.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we all know it all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dorsel.
Thank you.
Next, we have, next, we have a presentation in the two thousand and twenty five, twenty twenty nine CBBG consolidated plan update. So, yes. Turn the floor to you this time.
Thank you. So another introduction that I'd like to make this evening is Jody Davidson. Jody joined us, the city, on May first as the CBBG coordinator. And CBBG is Community Development Block Grant. And Community Development Block Grant is a program that's administered by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. So oftentimes, we come to city council and we talk about human services and you're going to see this in a second. We kind of break it into city funding and we break it into federal funding. But Jody's joined us and geez, in two months has accomplished a mountain of work and it's a very complex field. Federal funding and the restrictions and the auditing and the paperwork that goes with federal funding. Federal funding and the restrictions and the auditing and the paperwork that goes with federal funding. It's a world that befuddles me, so I'm immensely thankful for Jody's expertise and her willingness to jump in and just go with things and figure things out. So, I'm excited that Jody's here, meeting city council for the first time and participating in this presentation. So, you hear from both of us as we navigate through these slides. Again, here's a familiar slide. We always like to start with this. Which pocket of money are we talking about? So, we're talking about federal money. Every year, we get a different federal funding allocation. This is complex for us because we don't know our federal funding allocation till about midway through the year, so we're guessing what our number is going to be, and it always changes. And it can change between, you know, 50 and $60,000 per year. So, it's not pocket change. It has a meaning in how we approach programming. Right now, CBBG funds help support the city's housing home repair program, always something that we're really proud of, and I know the council's really proud of. Really impactful program of going out, getting in people's homes and helping them stay in their homes by fixing things like leaky roofs and, you know, restoring hot water and temperature and things like that to give people dignity and keep them in their homes. We also direct funds into ADA or ADA improvements, primarily in the form of sidewalk improvements. So, areas of the city that may be older and it might have some deteriorating or pre-existing, or pre-developed sidewalk conditions that might not meet ADA requirements today. So, with the help of Public Works, we can identify where those areas are in and go fix those and modernize them so that people in those communities can navigate their communities more effectively. We direct some of the federal funds into public services, and that really means that we're contracting with someone. We're hiring a nonprofit agency to help us deliver services within our community. And we also make some investments in economic development areas. It's guided by the consolidated plan, so like, why do, where do these categories come from? How are these decisions made about where to put money? You're going to hear about that a little bit more as we move through these slides. And we're going to ask city council for some feedback today and into the future about updating our next consolidated plan. Because the consolidated plan is what drives and prioritizes. And I feel like I've been before the city council four or five times or maybe 20 times and said, "When we get to the consolidated plan, maybe we can address the question you have or the priority you have." But once you have that five-year plan in place, that's what guides your spending investments. So, we'll talk about that. So... Yeah, I'm going to move it over to Jody for a few of these slides.
So, thank you. It's nice to meet all of you tonight. So, our annual grant award is based on our city's population and the density of low-to-moderate income individuals within the city proper. In addition to specific guidelines that all projects have to meet, every project we select also has to meet our national objectives. And it's not noted here, but I'll actually just tell you what they are. It has to benefit low-to-moderate income persons, so it's actually stated multiple times in the qualifications. It aids in the prevention of slum and blight, and they need to meet something having an urgent need or priority. And so, when we outline these projects, we, we go down this ranking, basically a ranking, if you, for lack of a better term, and we apply the HUD standards to the project and, and don't really know whether it's going to meet those qualifications until we get to the end of that evaluation process. So, our next, our next slide, you'll see this is just an overview of the planning process. We've actually are on that olive green color right at the beginning. Our planning process does span many months of the year, and we are at the beginning. As Jeff mentioned, we are going to come back to you again with a drafted plan once we've sought public input and ask you for your thoughts and feedback on the contents of that plan before we go forward. Jeff and I actually spoke today about some strategies to gain that public content and information that we need, all of that data, and I'm actually was just going to have him mention that. Do you remember the conversation we had about an hour ago?
Yeah.
I made, I made notes for you in case you didn't.
I can remember an hour ago. Not much further, man. But, no, so we were talking, like, what does public outreach look like? And how do you, how do you get community input for an effort like this to really make sure that you're driving investment to where the need is? And, you know, you compare that, or I compare that, and start thinking about what are the, are other public outreach efforts that we, you know, comprehensive plan and things like that? Well, this is different. This is, it's really important to go deeper into outreach and engagement to find out where the needs are and where to make the right investments. So, what we were talking about is probably coming up with, you know, right now, at least today, four categories of outreach that probably all have different strategies and tactics associated with them. And one is going to people who receive services and receive benefits from these funds. And how do you engage that population? That's different than going to the second group, which is the agencies that deliver services and how we engage those folks. And then there's a third group of community groups. We can spend money on economic development efforts, so we need to engage the Chamber, the Downtown Auburn Cooperative. So, there's different types of, those aren't like the nonprofit agencies that are helping with shelter services. They're helping in other areas. And then there's the general community. And all four of those areas, and, and as we work through this, a fifth may emerge, or, you know, we don't know. But we really need to develop different types of strategies about how we talk to people and get their feedback. The people who receive services, you know, we could see ourselves going straight to, you know, a senior center, going straight to the shelter and the food bank and area, you know, places where people are that are receiving benefit and hearing from them. And we know who the nonprofit agencies are, so we, you know, the engagement is going to be different with that kind of population. So, you know, again, just a sense of like, we need to develop different tactics for those different audiences that we're trying to hear from. And we need to engage city council. We need to engage the Human Services Committee. So, there's some internal engagement as well, and that's part of why we're here tonight is to start soliciting feedback from your perspective.
It's a, really a holistic approach to try to get the right kind of information that we need to drive how we spend this money. So, the next one, this five-year plan that we're talking about tonight, it prioritizes our spending, as we mentioned earlier, of these grant funds. It also helps our city to address barriers to affordable housing. We know that that's an issue countrywide, nationwide, some worse in some areas than others of the country. It also addresses our, helps us address our community development needs, since not all of the funds that we have are just spent on housing and housing repair. Our current plan that we're in started 2020, January of 2020, and it will commence December 31st, 2024. And our city plan is a portion of King County's plan as well. And so, once we have your approval on our plan, we will actually then submit it to King County, and they will actually review our plan as well. The next portion really kind of dives into a little bit about these projects that I mentioned earlier. Each goes through an eligibility review. We have an annual action plan that we create and submit. We also have this fun thing we call this CAPER. It's, as Jeff mentioned, it's, it's our report to HUD about how we did in the year before. We also have some administrative requirements. We have financial management. We track the HUD budget. How much have we spent? How much do we have left in each of our spending categories? Housing repair. We regularly track how much we're spending to contractors and how much is left in that allocation or that activity. And then we do monitor subrecipients. We don't have very many of those, but we do have them quarterly report to us about how they spent the funds with a narrative, including how many citizens of Auburn they have serviced during that quarterly period. And then, as I mentioned, we have a lot of budget tracking where we're really just paying attention to what we're spending as, as the, as the year goes on. Our consolidated plan is made up of some key components. Our needs assessment, it, it's an identifier of how the city goals can align with our community needs. It's a tool that Human Services Funding uses, and it provides some critical information for grant applications. We just had a, a Human Services meeting and talking about all the applications we received. It also supports the city, the city's strategic planning and development of this specific plan. We have a market analysis that is conducted, really to focus in on what housing is like within our city and, and identify if there are any geographic areas that need more attention than others within the city boundaries. As we know, that the housing market can be different in one part of a city as opposed to another part of the city. And that market analysis helps with that. It also helps us develop these very city-specific goals directed directly at how the CBG money is spent. The, the other thing that we're waiting on is the analysis of impediments that's completed by King County every, biannually, biannually. And that's more of a regional housing tool that we can use that will also help drive identifiers in our community. Let's see. I think you're up on the next one.
Okay. So, what shapes our next plan? Well, we talked a little bit about the need to engage the community. Maybe a contextual piece that might, might help is to look at what the current goals are within the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. So, you can see that affordable housing, ending homelessness, as well as community and economic development, were the three highest priorities that were established in 2019 for this current plan. So, there's a lot to say about each of these subjects, and there's a lot that's been built around each of these subjects. So, like Jody mentioned, we were at Human Services Committee meeting. We're talking through grant applications. How are, how is that committee making decisions to score applications that are submitted and scoring results and potential funding decisions? Well, they're going back to this, and they're looking to see what our goals are. They're in a weird spot this year because they're working on grant applications with the assumption that, because we have to, based upon where we're at, that, that we're using the existing goals of the current plan, which by next year, we may be in a funding cycle and those goals may have changed. So, there may be some, that makes some, for a little bit of awkwardness. So, today's really the starting point. Jody talked about the slide with kind of all those circles on it. We intend to, you know, continue over the next three or four months with a lot of community engagement, and we intend to be back before the city council share what we heard. We intend to, to come back and ask city council to conduct a formal public hearing, so we might get some additional feedback during that period of time. And then eventually, before the year's over, we're going to be asking city council to take an action. So, like I said, there are a couple other opportunities for council to engage and share some opinions and feedback before you actually have a formal matter, a formal resolution before you. Before jumping into that, though, because there is a slide, and if you read your agenda bill and you looked at this presentation, you're all on the list, and we're going to kind of go through a list and just say, "Do you have any feedback right now?" But before jumping in and doing that, we thought it was important to just share how you can spend CBG funds. There, there is a box that CBG program has on how you can spend funds. So, on the screen in front of you are a bunch of bullet points, a bunch of subject areas. Communities don't typically say, "Let's spend our allotment on all of these bullet points. Let's pick a few and prioritize those." So, I think it's important to sort of absorb what's on the screen there. And gosh, like, if you go into the federal standards, and if, if this would be helpful for city councils, a follow-up, we'd be happy to do this, but there's a lot of language under each of these bullet points. But we didn't want to, like, provide a single slide with eight-point font for each of these bullet points for this purpose. So, but you can see public facilities and improve, improvements, removal of blight, public services, which is pretty broad, relocation of displaced people or businesses, loss of rental income, low-income housing development, economic development, microenterprises assistance, homeownership, homeownership assistance, and property rehabilitation and/or clearance, like removal of buildings. So, those are subject areas.
Can we ask questions now or later?
I would normally say later, but since there's nobody after us presenting, I'm going to say now is fine. I'm the last item on the agenda.
I just had a question, and I'm, I'm not sure what department this goes to, and that's why I'm asking.
Hold on, let me call.
I'm sorry.
I couldn't resist. Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Disability. What under, what umbrella does disability fall under? And when people with disability call us for questions, and who do we refer them to?
I hate to answer the question with "it depends," but I will provide better, a better answer than "it depends." But it does depend upon the nature of what you're asking about. So, if someone calls you, a constituent calls you and says, "I have a disability. I'm in a wheelchair, and I can't navigate a certain part of the city." You know, that might end up going to an, if it's a public improvement, that might be something we want to get over to Public Works to consider whether there's any projects in the future, things like that. But if it's, I mean, generally speaking, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, a lot of that probably lives mostly in community development and Public Works. So, as we review permits and we address issues, if there's an apartment complex and we're talking about parking stalls and where they're at, and if they're, you know, if people have access or a shopping center, and it's on-site, on private property, general thumb is that it should find its way into community development to see if we can do something. If it's in the public right-of-way spaces, it's probably going to find its way into Public Works. If it's a city building, it's probably going to find its way to parks or facilities or something like that. So, it really does depend upon the nature. You can always start with, with community development, I would say. Because I hate to, like, answer the question and then have you have to figure out how to navigate City Hall if you've got a constituent. Really, any department's here to help. But since I'm up here, I'll tell you that we could, that we'd be happy to help field the question and get that person in the right place.
Okay.
So, this is a moment for us to just listen to you. So, we're going to kind of sit back and take some notes, and we'll go in this order, I guess. We wanted to end with Councilmember Clinton Taylor and Councilmember Trump Manuall just because they serve as the chair and vice-chair of this subject areas. That's why you see their names last. And then open it to the floor. And we'll start with Councilmember Rakes. Any initial thoughts or feedback? And don't feel like boxed in or like too worried about whether it fit a slide before this that we said something about, just like, what are you hearing in the community? Or what is your personal experience for anything related to kind of this, this area of human services or economic development or revitalization? And maybe the thing to do is to go back up if I can. Oh, it's just slow. There. So, any initial thoughts that you're willing to share with us?
I have a couple. When you were talking about engagement and getting the nonprofits to help with engagement, my first thought, when you mentioned certain areas, I would not leave out senior mobile home parks because I know that they have used the city services quite a bit for rehabilitations for things in their homes. And what's happening with them is a lot of them are losing their homes just because of the price of everything. So, they don't have the money to have things fixed. And so, they're thinking, from what I'm hearing, they're thinking that the wage thing hasn't gone up at all, and so they wouldn't qualify because some of them are going back to work part-time just to try to make ends meet so they don't have to move in with their kids. So, that would be one, one area that I would say, don't forget those engagements to the senior parks in our area. As far as the blight-related code enforcement, that could incorporate a lot of things that we could maybe incorporate something with some of the businesses that need improvement that are in the blight area. I'd have to give that some thought. So those are my first just kind of things that bounced out at me. Because I can tell you that most of the business owners right now that are not back to pre-COVID numbers can't afford to do some stuff to their businesses that they should be getting done. So I don't know how that fits in.
And I think I will just say on that point, because you mentioned it, that maybe, I assume not every council member knows this, but probably 20 years ago, the city council took an action to designate the downtown area. I can't remember the actual term, but it was basically like a blighted area. Yeah, it was blight. And that designation's never been lifted, which the downtown looks a lot different than it did 20 years ago. But that designation actually is what allows us to have a facade improvement program and spend public funds on private buildings. So to your point that that designation, and then you look at this terminology here, that there is a tie in there. Thank you. Councilmember Amer.
One thing that came to my mind, because it's taken me forever, maybe if we want to look to something, most of the time I hear and look on Facebook, affordable daycare, I don't know. Second, I heard Cheryl said the senior, maybe even invest some. I'm not sure if the funding will be adequate because some of the education for the senior, they don't know what they're eligible like for the tax, property tax they pay half. Maybe we get some funding for the education for them. And I think we have public King County here, so we don't need any area where there's the medical or investment or help some business allowed. I know some dentals, even they're allowed to have help long-income people, maybe at least find some organization. Or ask King County Seattle Clinic to have similar one here at least once a year. What came to my mind?
I know that the Lions Club has site and hearing and also for dental, for low-income people. So your nonprofits may be able to help out and stuff like that.
And when we talk about, when you see that bullet point up there, public services, that is the type of category that when it, that's what that's speaking to. And incidentally, just so you, general awareness, and that's city money, not CDBG. But the city does fund, contribute funding to the Christ Free, Christ Community Free Dental Clinic, which provides dental services right next to City Hall once a month, I believe. Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's very timely that this came up because I was just asking the other day for an update from our retreat, what our outcomes were from that. So I'm hoping that as we're putting this together, that we can align that list of strategy that we had with this prioritization activity as well. I would say maybe off the top of my head, as we're looking at balancing for the next five years, we're going to be seeing a lot of shift in funding coming into the county with King County's levy is one thing that I would note. So having our continued focus on housing and affordable housing, well, I think that's very important. If we're looking at this sort of limited pool of funds that may need a little bit of a rebalance in other areas that maybe are less funded, if you will. So top of mind, and these I think align with some of the things I had brought up at the retreat, would be looking at resilient food systems. I don't think there's a day that goes by where I don't hear about people talking about the cost of their groceries and the need to make sure that people are not going hungry in the community, particularly as inflation is taking its sweet time to go down. I would also continue to look at cooling programs as that is directly impacting, you know, health and housing for folks who don't have any way to cool down when we reach these really hot days, particularly in our valley region, which is hotter than other areas of King County. And that might be programs like shade trees, green roofs, green walls, reflective materials, any number of mechanisms for that to help people along the way. I would echo what my counterpart said as far as property rehabilitation. So maintaining people in their homes, I think, is a really crucial piece of CDBG money. And then the other area would be, you know, maybe something in that generalized space of safety. I want to make sure that if we want people to come be in our community, whether it's visit or shop or live, that they continue to have safety. So there's obviously myriad ways we can challenge that or tackle that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Pretty much echo what a lot of my fellow council members said. I fell in love with two communities, senior communities, that truly do need some sort of assistance or some sort of guidance, especially when it comes to home improvement. When you visit their homes, they are in just absolute poor condition. So having some sort of education workshop to show them how to, how to apply for something like this because they really don't know that it's there. So the education, like Councilmember had said, that is crucial, I believe, for our seniors here in the city. As for economic development, I'd love to see some sort of assistance along the lines of helping new business owners and continue to just boost our economy here in, in the city. And then the other thing that I just ran into somebody yesterday at Les Cove, the homeownership assistance, there are a younger couple that just moved here from Alabama, and they legitimately feel priced out of South King County. They cannot find affordable housing, and they are, they have decent jobs. So I think in some sort of way, giving them the education, if not, again, it comes back to workshops. I feel like those are so effective for residents to help them along the way.
I didn't know you guys were going to reverse or change roles from chair and vice chairs. So, but I'm going to stay with the list and go to Councilmember Taylor.
I would just add, echo everything that I've heard here today, but also, you know, Director Hayes and I kind of have a similar kind of feeling about whatever services that are being provided that we're also making sure that folks are being accountable for how those dollars are being used as well as, you know, leveraging these partnerships in the community that are already providing some of these services. And maybe we shift some of those dollars, because you'll find a lot of agencies that are providing a lot of duplicate services. And so if that's the case, then, you know, how are we streamlining that? And how are we assuring that we're making the best use of those dollars that they're getting out to the community regardless of, you know, what areas of these bullet points that we're addressing? And then how are we holding those agencies accountable for the services that they're providing? And then are they able, if those fundings, because I'm a firm believer in, you know, I don't want to advertise something we can't deliver or don't fund something that we can't. If we weren't able to fund them, how would they be able to continue those services if those fundings weren't available? So being able to, you know, one, leverage existing partnerships, kind of make sure we're holding folks accountable for the dollars that they are receiving, and then being able to leverage those existing services that already exist in the community. So again, that we can maximize, because $680,000, yeah, it's, it's a nice chunk of money, but if you're funding 35 or 40 agencies and six or seven of them are doing the same thing, it's kind of, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. So we need to make sure that, yeah, that those services are being provided as well as, again, how those dollars are being accounted for.
Thank you. And Acting Deputy Mayor slash Chair of the Community Wellness SFA slash Councilmember.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say welcome. We've been waiting for someone to take over that position. So it's nice to hear that you have a background on that, and it's going to be nice working with you. So welcome. I've been gone for two weeks on, on retreats. And that's all, I mean, conferences and everywhere I went, it's the same thing that I hear here in our, in our hometown. The people of color that are really hurting for rental and for their rent. They've got like two to three people living in one apartment. So low-income housing, people are struggling to make, you know, be able to pay their mortgage. And if something breaks down, they have to wait and save a little bit of money, three or four or five months, to be able to fix those. So those are things that I have been hearing within our city and also at, you know, several conferences that I've been to that people are seeing that the people of color are really struggling in those areas. Homeownership assistant, I know that the banks here are really looking to help out. And we just need to get the, they need to get the story out that they have available loans and stuff for lower-income people to help them in their homeownership. And those are the ones, I pretty much agree with my fellow council members, of all the needs that we need in our city.
Great. That's a lot of really good feedback in a pretty condensed period of time, so thank you for sharing. We have a few slides left before we close out. I'll turn it back over to Jody.
So here we're back again to our, our slide of our little timeline. Again, reiterated, we're at the beginning step. We are waiting on finalization of an agreement with Cloudverse Consulting Group. They will perform research and analysis on our behalf. Anticipated that we will have the report and data that will roll into the draft consolidated plan by the end of October. We will come back to you in early November, as that's what's planned, to seek your additional input on a draft plan. That draft plan will include public comment and, and the analysis that we will be getting. And then we will return again in early December to ask you to finalize this plan and get it submitted to HUD before the end of the year. That is the plan. And then I think this is just our last slide. This really kind of goes back to some of the administrative things we touched on earlier. Our consolidated plan spans that five-year time period, and there's a specific cadence that we go through during that five-year time period. And as you can see, they're staggered. So we have a caper that's due, it's been turned in. And the next thing that we have is a 25-action plan and then a 25-caper. That cadence that we submit to HUD keeps us, one, in compliance, two, it's accountability of the actions that we choose to take and how we spend the money. The caper has some very specific demographic data. We have to report how many individuals and their demographic information, including, including race, ethnicity, income, the areas that they live in, in the city, and then what kind of services did we provide to them during that time period? So it's a very thorough, kind of a holistic report that we give back to HUD to tell them how successful we have been with actually taking care of, or lack of a better term, executing the things that we choose to do in the action plan. And then I think we're on the last slide.
One thing that I would add is, is we went around and got a little bit of initial feedback. If you think of things or if you hear things in the community from your constituents, if people approach you and ask a question or ask for a wish or whatever it is, say that there's a need, now, like over the course of the next several months, please shoot that off to us. You know, shoot off an email and just say, I heard this, and we'll count that as feedback. You know, wherever we get feedback is good. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't feel like this is, that there's no other opportunity between now and November.
I also wanted to add, like Cheryl talked about, the seniors, people that are aging out and the families cannot take care of them, they don't know where to put their family. That's a great need. I've been hearing a lot about that. So, you know, I don't, I don't know where to direct these people to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you. And then one more, yes, Councilwoman Baldwin.
I'm curious, when we're putting our approach together for, you know, the next five years, do we have anything that we would shift or change as far as our management practices? So for example, if we encounter any service providers that aren't meeting our expectations from a service-level perspective, are we building anything in that would allow for an opportunity either to rescind a grant and redirect it to a party that is meeting their commitments? How do we handle that?
Today, we actually had a conversation with our Human Services Committee. If I can, sorry, sorry, just shooting runs, I'm just shooting it right off. A lot of these agencies that we give CDBG money to, we also give city funds to. So we can have solid ground, for example, they get CDBG money and they get city funds. We actually had a conversation with our committee today about engaging in, in ownership of how they're spending those funds and either having those agencies come in and present to our Human Services Council or getting our council members out, out on the street to those individuals to, to show greater accountability that we, we expect them to report. I will tell you that in 2023, quarter four, I won't name them, but one of our agencies that we chose to give CDBG money to did not report. We did not pay them. And so there is accountability before those payments are sent off.
I feel like I smile a little bit because we had our Human Services Committee meeting at four o'clock, and I swear you were eavesdropping on the conversation because they asked the same question. They're like, how do we, how do we ensure accountability? How do we sure, because I'll tell you that traditionally, and this is not unique to Auburn, traditionally, the mechanism for like determining whether to pay a voucher, pay an invoice, is to rely upon the report that they submit to us. We require narratives be submitted so that it's not just numbers, but their stories. But there's a, there's this looming question, I think, within the committee too of, how do you scratch deeper? How do you make sure that the investment, that the taxpayers and that the electeds who are, you know, caretaking public funds, that it's going to the right places? And that, that quarter after quarter and year after year, that there's accountability? So your Human Services Committee, our Human Services Committee, very much wants to make that come front and center.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean to be eerie with my question. I'm glad you're here.
Not eerie.
Guys are talking about it, thinking through it, planning for it. Because as Councilmember Taylor said, if we have multiple groups that are providing the same service, if some are pulling their weight and others aren't, that seems like a very clear direction on who we should be working with. So as much as we can take that going into the future.
And especially with these funds, because you can apply in multiple cities for these funds. And I've seen organizations, I'm like, now they applied in five different cities. I'm kind of like, how are they, I mean, it's possible, but you're in five different cities up down the I-5 corridor. I'm kind of raising my eyebrow a little bit about how you're, you know, meeting the, the metrics and that. And I would love to see the scope of work and say, well, I don't know about that. But that's another conversation for another day. But definitely the accountability piece, again, whatever we're funding is, people need to be accountable for those services that they're providing. And it does need to be more than narrative. So I like the idea of maybe council members or, you know, maybe advisory group or someone, you know, doing site visits or actually talking to clients that have actually been able to benefit from those services of some sort like. So, yeah, I'd be interested in that, definitely.
I was just going to say, it's maybe the last point on that, if I don't lose my train of thought, is I sometimes find it can be shocking if you find that groups are out there providing a service and you just simply, you know, put on that hat of, imagine you're somebody who would be receiving support from them, right? And pick up the phone and call. How quickly do they call you back? You know, do they respond to messages? Do they respond to emails? Like that sort of responsive quotient, to me, I think, is a really big component of, you know, creating public trust in the things that we do and the work that we do. And I love the site visits. And, you know, I had another one, but I forget. And I'm just really glad you're here, so thank you.
Well, I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you again. What a, I always love our committee because there's so much to do in this wellness committee, so thank you. So thank you. Before we adjourn, I did want to give a little report about our ad hoc committee that we had today. And we have appointed Ms. Hanan a mayor as our chair for the ad hoc committee for our, doing our city council rules and procedures. So if anyone has, if you had the time to go through the book, if you have any questions, send them to Hanan and to our city clerk so that we can add them to our, as we're going through the book. Thank you.
Is there a deadline for that?
Uh, Hanan, I'm going to put that on you.
The study session July 29.
And.
For a first review or for?
For overall. For us, we have not scheduled the meeting yet to meet, so we will send it, but for us to go. And the study session is to schedule July 29. So if you have any things before then, we feel free to send it. Yeah, but we'll have it here.
Don't send them directly to you because that creates a chain meeting. Send them to our city clerk, please. No.
Not to her.
No, that creates a chain meeting.
All right. Thank you. And no further questions? Thank you. No, that's right.
Trying to keep y'all out of trouble.